Ladies and gentlemen, would you please stand? And join councilman Case? In the pledge to our country and flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing for our prayer.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings of the season. And, Lord, how I pray that your Spirit will be with these council members and the mayor tonight as they take care of business that affects our community and our citizenship. We pray, Lord, for your protection, and we pray that your will will be done here on earth as it is in heaven. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thanks Pastor Andy. Called order, our Guthrie Public Works Authority Meeting of Tuesday, December 4th. Second item on our agenda is public comments, community announcements. We have a community announcement by Jerry Gamble. Jerry?
Thank you, by the way.
Okay. Please identify yourself and your address if you would.
My name is Jerry Gamble, and I live at 2302 Mini Rose Drive in Guthrie. I'm with the Quanis Group here in town. We just wanted to come in and thank the city and the city council, and all the staff here at the city for the use of the chambers for our auction we're going to be having here on Saturday. And if you've never watched it, you really ought to try it. Without this facility and all of the amenities that it has here, it would be impossible to do. Aaron Ryburn is the magician that makes it all happen for us. So, as you all know, without him, it's not going to happen either. So, I just wanted to thank everybody and just remind everyone to tune in if you can. It's going to be on your channel, Cox Cable Channel 20. If you don't get that, or you know someone who doesn't, have them check out Guthrie News Page and livestream from there. We're still taking a few donations, but we've got quite a few things already donated, and hopefully we'll have a good auction this year.
What do you need?
We need anything that we can sell to raise money to support the kids in this community.
What kind of kid support do you give?
We do a coats-for-kids program where we take kids who need coats, and it doesn't have to be a coat. Maybe they just need shoes, or socks, or a pair of jeans. And we go out to Walmart and we buy what they want. If the kids are old enough, we actually, the counselors bring them from the school, meet us out there, and they get to pick out the clothes. And that way, we guarantee that it's something that they'll wear.
So that the people in the community know, how is it that if my kids needed help, how do I get that help? How do I approach you? What process do I go through?
They actually can call me, but actually, the best way to do it is go through the school counselors. And there's other things that the school counselor can do to help that child besides just the clothing. And they can make it an ongoing thing that they can monitor. And if there's other things that they can help them with from the community, the counselors are keyed in on all these different things that they can do for the kids.
Which, that's a great thing because it keeps them under the radar, the children under the radar on the program.
Correct. And that's the way we identify most of the kids. The teachers mention it to the counselors and principals, and then it gets to us, and we try to make a list. And like I said, some of the younger kids, say, third grade and below, usually, they just buy something for them. The counselor identifies what they need and buys it for them. But fourth grade and up, we try to take them out there and let them do the shopping.
That's fantastic.
It is.
We've got several other programs around the schools. The BUCK program, a reading program that we're sponsoring now. Every penny that we raise in this auction will go towards the kids in our community.
That's fantastic.
Tell the viewing audience a little bit about the BUCK program.
BUCK program is Bring Up Grades. It's for every third grade student in town. We also do, we do all of Guthrie Public Schools, and we do St. Mary's second and third grade.
What's the BUCK program consist of?
Well, it's a Bring Up Grades. We have incentives from the community, whether it be a donut from Missy's or a slice of pizza from Tony's. We have a taco and a Coke, or something like that. There are little incentives that we give to the teacher, and we tell the student that, you know, if you bring up your grades, that teacher will give you that item. And the kids will work for it. And we try to make the incentives worthwhile, and we do that throughout the program. We make the program last for a couple of months. And then, at the end of the program, we have a drawing for bicycles. Sometimes some other items will have basketballs, or soccer balls, or something like that. It's just something where, you know, if they get enough, if they bring up their grade enough times in the class, they throw tickets into a bucket every time they bring up their grades, and we draw from that bucket. And if they win the bike, or whatever, you know, it's an exciting deal. We go pump them up, try to get them excited about it.
I like that.
Yeah, I do too.
That's really cool.
Good.
We need members, so.
Well, I'm not one yet, so maybe you ought to think about that.
There you go, Councilman. Well, Quanis is doing great things for the youth of our community. And obviously, it costs money. And one of the ways, one of the, your biggest fundraiser is the auction coming up. So if you've got things that you want to donate for the auction, get ahold of Jerry. And if you clearly come right here to the council chambers, or get on Channel 20. The phones are ringing all the time. You can be here, putting your bid in, in person, or on the phone. Bid often, bid high. It's for a really, really good cause. It's for our kids.
You guys are doing an awesome job.
Thank you all.
Good job, Jerry. Okay, item number three, consent agenda items A and B. A is the approval of Public Works Authority Meeting, November 20th. And B is the approval of the regular scheduled meetings for all of calendar 2019. I'll entertain a motion and a second.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes, please. Let's see the votes. Unanimous approval of all the council present to approve consent agenda items A and B. With that being the last item on the agenda, our Public Works Authority meeting is adjourned, and I call to order our city council meeting of December 4th. We will move, I'll entertain a motion to move into executive session.
So moved.
For exec-
Second.
Second.
Items A and B. We have a motion and a second to move into executive session. Is there any discussion? Submit your votes. See the votes. A unanimous approval to move into executive session to discuss items A and B. Okay, I'm reconvening our city council meeting of December 4th. We had moved item number six, actually, to item number two. That was to request to convene to executive session. So I am following that up with item number seven. Request action on local number 2145, collective bargaining agreement. And I believe we have a motion.
I make a motion to approve the contract for the collective bargaining agreement for the IAFF Local 2145.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Submit your vote, please. See the votes. Unanimous approval to approve the collective bargaining agreement with Local 2145. Item number eight, which is action regarding Miles versus City of Guthrie. No action taken at this time. So now we'll move back to item number two on our official agenda, which is the consent agendas, items A through C. A is the approval of the city council meeting of November 20th. B is to confirm a schedule for our regular meetings for all of calendar year 2019. And C is to approve amendment number five, which is a design for a project for rehab terminal apron for airport improvement program for the airport. And it actually is costing Guthrie $3,105 for the design of that, that project. That's on all on consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
How big is the total project going to be on that, Leroy?
I'd have to go back on those. I don't know that we've got a number yet on the actual project, but we'll apply for a grant for it, and it'll be 90-10, and we'll pay 5% of it. But I don't know if we got the full number yet.
Okay. All right. Submit your votes, folks. See the votes. Unanimous approval of consent agenda items A, B, and C. Item number three, discussion of possible action on acceptance of grant funds for the amount of $4,370,000 for splash pad and playground improvements at Mineral Wells Park. Staff comments, please.
So this is the 50-50 match grant that was applied for at the end of July. And we actually received a tentative award letter on Friday. And so, this would be $437,500 of our money, paired with money from OTRD to do a new splash pad, utilizing the existing line of the waiting pool at Mineral Wells. It'd also include ADA-accessible hard-surface parking and sidewalks, inclusive play playground equipment to replace our current equipment that's from the '90s. And then, it would also include five historic-looking pavilions for families in picnicking.
So this will fit with more of the motif of Mineral Wells with historical kinds of structures, if you will, in the splash pads?
Absolutely. So, the splash pad rendering that we have is a railroad theme to kind of give history and a tip of the hat to everything that has established Guthrie. And then, the playground was a little western saloon-type playground. So, there won't be primary colors. There won't be anything contemporary. We really want to keep the integrity of the park and keep that rich history going.
And again, it'll all be ADA-accessible, just like what we did at Banner Park?
Yes. And right now, we don't have any hard surfacing at Mineral Wells, so it's not ADA-accessible. Even if you could get to the sidewalk, you would have to cross gravel anywhere you would park out there in order to do that. So we think that that will be a significant improvement.
Does acceptance of this require us to put in a splash pad at Mineral Wells?
That was part of the project proposal.
Is it required that we use, put in a splash pad? That's what I'm asking. Do you know?
I don't know the answer to that.
We would have to amend our application, and it would be the possibility that you would lose points, so you would lose the grant if you took a major piece out of your grant application. But we would know that without going forward with it. But normally, if you take a major item out of your project, you lose enough points that you then lose the grant.
Or you have to put something back in that's major that would replace it?
If it would be something acceptable to the granting agency, yes.
Okay.
And I agree with Commissioner Case. I'm, I have issues with the splash pad at that location. I think it's great that it'd be updating the playground equipment, the historic pavilions, or looking pavilions that go around. I think that keeps the park very nice and maybe even more accessible to a lot of different people. I, the ADA compliance and the hard surfacing, part of the charm of the old park is the old drives and the old walkways. I understand that's hard for infirm people to get around. But, and I guess that's just part of progress that we have to put up with. I do also have problems with it just being a 50-50 grant. That's $437,000. That's a lot of money that we've got to come up with that a lot of ways, I think, might be better spent, say, at our-
Sports complex.
The sports complex, yes. That would be, you know, even though that's a big money outlet, still is a nice chunk of change to put into it.
What's the issue with the sports complex?
Well, I'd like to, I have no problem with the sports-
I'm sorry, splash pad.
Splash pad one, I think it's a, one, it's not that historic in that area. It keeps the park quieter. It's right next to a pool. I don't know how, or a big lake.
Pond.
A pond that's dangerous.
You'd have to fence that.
Just a minute.
Yes, we'd have to fence. We'd have to keep people off because, obviously, people are going to take their kids to a splash pad. They're going to drop them off. They're going to leave. Who's going to leave, you know, who's going to play in a splash pad when you see a big pond over here that they're going to go? So I see a liability, a major liability for the city with a splash pad right next to an open access pool.
Has the liability issue been addressed? Or is there a liability issue with the pond there?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
I think it would just be if that was a step we wanted to take to put that in. We did have, in the budget, we did have a decorative fence around the splash pad, and that's in this budget. I would say that Banner Park was done without grant money, and that was a $735,000 project. So, very, very similar. But we're actually, you know, taking this free money, if you will, and pairing it with our money to make the dollar go further, to have a substantial improvement. And the area that was proposed for the splash, the splash pad used to be a waiting pool. So I feel like we're utilizing that existing water line, and that kids used to play there during the summer months anyways.
I've never seen a history of people leaving the waiting pool, go jump in the pond and drown, but.
Well, you know, one of the things are, I've looked at a bunch of splash pads, and I don't see them with, right next to a pond within 30 feet, 40 feet of a pond.
But in the reverse to that is, I grew up with that splash pad or the-
Waiting pool.
Waiting pool. Waiting pool. And there was never anyone over there in the river, or the pond, or whatever you want to call it. And a lot of times, the parents did drop them off. It just never was an issue.
Was that pond there as it is today?
Not exactly as it is today, but it was there.
Well, and that's one of the concerns. Because I've been to Banner Park with my granddaughter on a couple of different occasions, and those kids are everywhere, absolutely everywhere. But that's not the question that I have. That's their question right at this point. Question I have is, can this grant, is this type of grant the same type of grant we would use at the sports complex?
This is the type of grant that could be used for any kind of outdoor recreation.
That's one question. And then, could this type of grant be used for a neighborhood park across the street behind ACE to kind of revitalize an entire neighborhood?
I actually like that idea, that idea of taking that money.
Versus mineral wells.
I don't know, Leroy, I don't know what we can't-
Just a minute, just a minute.
Versus trying to turn mineral wells into a neighborhood park, basically, is what we're trying to do.
And it's not a neighborhood.
It's not a neighborhood.
No.
Okay, but we have a prime area across the street for a neighborhood park.
I don't believe, we don't own land over there.
Okay, we buy the land. There's a lot of lots over there. I'm sure we can get for-
Less than $437,000.
Seriously. There are, there's whole blocks, half blocks.
Typically, land and water conservation fund grants are used for larger, more regional park improvements, like the sports park, sports facilities, this type of thing, other than infield or neighborhood parks. I'm not saying they can't be funded, but typically, we originally looked at the sports complex as our preferred application for this round of the land and water conservation grant. We were in the process of trying to buy land for the sports complex. We could not work out a deal with the school land commission, so we could not go forward at the time this application was due with an application for the sports complex. It would still be 50-50.
So you transferred it.
So what we did was, we took what we thought was the second priority, another splash pad in our community, addressing the playground situation and the parking situation, and applied it to this. Our hope is that in the next year or two, we will be in a position to apply for another land and water conservation fund to get money for the sports facility. Now, the sports facility we're looking at, and now looking at the 80 acres, it's going to be between a $12 to $14 million project. So we're going to have to do it in pieces. This grant won't keep us from getting the grant in the future for that project. And if we break it down and look at it in pieces, I think we, most of us would agree that the playground equipment, it's over 20 years old. It doesn't meet today's standards as far as ADA accessibility. Safety features have changed since that equipment was installed. You can't get replacement parts. We had a slide problem, and it took us six months, I think, to get a replacement slide. So that equipment needs to be replaced. If you look at the parking situation, without having parking spots that are surfaced with lines on it, everybody parks haphazardly. And they'll park this way and that way, and you get about half the parking you can in the park as a result of that. So when you have car shows and other events, you don't get as much parking down there because everybody just parks any way they want to park.
Right.
And if you got organized, you get more parking.
Can we address the rest of this and not include a splash pad?
Well, one thing we could do is, if it is, if the only issue is the splash pad and its location next to the pond, is we could explore the opportunity to look at another site within the park for the splash pad. And work with-
Like on the north end of it or something?
We could explore our options as far as where we might place it to be more accommodating. Be glad to have input from Councilman Woods or others. Our thoughts are, we're going to try to make this blend in with the historic uniqueness of the park. But even though it's a historic park, it's just like, if you look at our swimming pool, when those swimming pools were built in the 1930s, that was the trend. That was the thing. Everybody wanted that big cement pond. People don't use those anymore. Very few kids swim in a big pond like that. Most of the recreation is done in splash pads and shallow water instead of the deep ponds. So you have to make some changes. If you go do things to serve your current population, and that's what we're trying to do, is do things to attract young professionals, young entrepreneurs with young families in our community, we've got to have amenities that are appeasing to them, not what appeased the people back in 1910.
Well, one thing I've got to admit-
But we do it, though, we want to do it where it's complementary of the past.
Councilman Case?
I've got to admit that though Mineral Wells is not presently a neighborhood park, a child-friendly park, really. I mean, there's kids play there, but it's not a, it's not like the-
Banner?
No.
Highland?
It's not like Highland Park. There's not kids just everywhere when you go to Mineral Wells. And maybe we can turn that into that. And maybe there's a possibility to do that. But as far as historically, what it, at least historically from my knowledge, how it's been, it's always been kind of an adult park. It's where people went to eat lunch and get into the shade trees and relax. It's not really been a child's park before. Because it's not in a neighborhood. It's not like they can get, you know, leave the house and walk a block and be at the park like they can at some of the others. So maybe this is a good idea.
Well, it had a waiting pool.
It used to be.
Yeah, it had a waiting pool initially.
Historically, it was different from what I knew.
Yeah, yeah, they had a waiting pool initially.
There were some differences.
And historically, there were smaller shelters there, in addition to the-
There were homes closer, all that area just to the north, I'm sure, had homes at one time.
So what happens with the basketball court and the tennis courts and everything we redid? How does that all come into play in the new plan?
It won't change those. I mean, they'll continue to be used just like they are now.
And if we looked at, just speaking of Highland, because you bring up Highland, you know, we've been out there quite a few times as well. We looked at that as an opportunity for this? Or is that-
We looked at it, but we felt that this was the better location for this particular project. It addressed several things. At some point, we're going to have to make a decision on the big swimming pool in Highland and make decisions there. When we make that decision, then I think we would be in a position to do some new things in Highland. But we really need to make a decision on what we're going to do with that ancient swimming pool before we do something in Highland.
Well, I agree, because that swimming pool is definitely outdated, and it has its issues. And we just barely keep it running year to be, by year. And both by people, with the why, looking after-
Well, it's like you said, maybe we fill that swimming pool in and build a monster splash pad park out there.
What I would like to see, and this is just my dream, not the community's dream or anybody's at this point, but when we redo Highland, I would like to do it in a way where we do a splash pad, but we put in some water slides with it, make it a bigger thing, and put some water slides in where you have, instead of going into a pool, you go into a trough, and you slow down. And then, maybe provide a small, more shallow swimming lanes for aerobic exercise or swimming lessons, rather than put a gigantic pond in. Do some unique features like that. I don't know that we're ready to move to that project yet.
And I would just like to add, from the citizen survey from 2016, that this project checks for the boxes of the top nine things that people asked for. Number three was youth activities, seven senior activities, eight sidewalk improvements, and nine park improvements. So I feel like we're really giving the community what they've asked for with this project. And then, just to parlay what Leroy said, Mineral Wells is the more centralized location. And so, we felt if we were going to do this first project and make improvements, that Mineral Wells would be kind of like the central location to highlight that, hey, we're doing things in Guthrie, and we're providing amenities or updating amenities that the community is asked for.
Well, and it, no question, it has a high visibility area with the proximity to Division. And, you know, and I think there is a visibility, there is an appearance issue there. I think it's, is a very positive one, that, hey, we're moving ahead.
It is in plain sight.
It is. And, you know, and I know the basketball court gets used significantly. I know the lights are on an awful lot when I drive by. So I think that's a positive thing from a standpoint of use of the park area that I never saw before, before the-
You think maybe they go there because nobody's there?
No. Before the resurfacing of the basketball courts and the tennis courts. So I think that's a, I think that's a positive. And as we all know, the gazebo gets used quite a bit.
My only concern is, it's a half a million dollars, basically, out of pocket. The sports complex can be a revenue generator, period. And it can be, big, big time. That can bring in tremendous revenue to Guthrie. The splash pad is going to be something, I can vision what you're talking about because I've seen the whole thing. And like I say, when we have our granddaughter, we go park hopping. So I know all the different, the different parks around in Guthrie, Edmond, Oklahoma City, and it'd be awesome. But we're limited on the money that we have, guys. I mean, that's just the fact.
One thing I might add that's under consideration by the task force for the sports complex is a proposal to take our motel tax from 4% to 8%. And the additional 4% would be locked in for sports facilities. And that would generate over 15 years at our current amount of taxes we get for the motels, about $3.5 million. So with that, and if you get $3.5 million from a land and water conservation fund, that would fund the first phase or half of the project. So we're not trying to limit ourselves on the sports facility to just the CIP tax because you're not going to get there on a $14 million project, just taking it out of the system.
It's just concerning because we've got a $10, $12 million wastewater treatment plant that's just sitting out there, you know, we're doing nothing, that we paid a million dollars, basically, for engineering. And, you know, it's just more money that should and could be going towards infrastructure, so to speak, whether it be a sports complex and infra- so to speak, whether it be a sports complex infrastructure that's gonna generate revenue or a new wastewater treatment plant that's gonna take waste.
Sewage lines and water lines.
Eventually gonna close up supposedly on us.
I mean, I like this idea. I think it's a great thing that we could do this park. I just don't like the money, just like Mr. Bothroyd's saying. It's, I think it's a lot of money that we could put somewhere else at the moment.
And I don't know if it makes a difference, but not all of our contribution is cash. A lot of it is in-kind labor-
Well, let's talk about that.
That Public Works can do. I can pull out the budget for that.
That's a big, that's a potential game changer, if that's the case.
Yeah.
Leroy?
We're talking about just hard dollars of four hundred and thirty-seven, half a million.
Because I thought this was a dollar, dollar match, but there's an in-kind.
Yeah, we did have in-kind labor contributions as a portion of that.
At Banner, how much, Tenny, what was our estimate on how much we contributed in-kind?
We did about two hundred and seventy thousand in-kind.
So, approximately fifty percent?
Yes.
So, there you go, folks.
Well, but let's see what, if she's got some hard numbers on it, I would like to see them, especially if we're gonna vote on them.
Yeah.
I don't have a breakdown, but I can tell you what we do on all these projects is we explore what our opportunities is to use in-kind labor to save money. But then we weigh that against the other project load that we have, too.
When does this particular grant need to be accepted? I mean, would it make sense, would it make sense, would it make sense to push this one council till we could have those type numbers and make a reasonable decision?
Are you under a timeline? I mean, obviously, there is, but I mean, how tight are you?
I'm not sure how tight that is.
I don't think we have a deadline that we have to accept it tonight. We can push it to the next meeting if you all chose to do so.
I think that would get you, because that is a big game changer with in-kind.
I think that, and possibly moving the splash pad to a different location or seeing more what the splash pad would look like. Again, with the pavilions, the playground equipment, the parking, the hard surfaces, I think that's a great idea. And-
And I don't know that it's gonna be so much of a neighborhood thing like Banner, where the kids are moving, their kids are coming from the neighborhood houses there. I think this is gonna be more something that you're gonna actually bring your kid or your grandchildren to, and you're probably gonna stay there with them. At least, we would.
And as I drive through the park, it is a destination park, because there's a lot of people that go and park during the day. I see a lot of children out with mothers and, you know, fathers.
There is a concern about the car shows, big-time car shows and stuff that we have there, to make sure that they can all park and still get all that in.
And still get up.
We closed the park for those.
Right.
Leroy, if we were to replace the splash pad with a waiting pool, of course, if the waiting pool, parents are going to be there. Children aren't gonna go there by themselves to get in a waiting pool. Parents are gonna be with them if they're in a waiting pool. So, the guidance that you'd need there for the water, if the pond is an issue, then you're gonna have guidance if it's a waiting pool, and it brings us back to where we historically were. Is there any chance of doing something like that and replacing the water, so that you still get the grant?
There is, but if you look at the trends of use of parks,
They use splash pads.
The most popular thing now is splash pad.
And that's the thing.
And the splash pad probably has less liability than a waiting pool. I mean, you could drown in six inches of water.
Yeah, but you got a point there. You got a point there. I was just trying to think-
No, I hear what you're saying, Jim.
That kept the parents out there.
If we just fenced that one area right there, it covers it, I believe, just right there.
But it also destroys the park.
Not necessarily up, we fence it up at the water edge. Anyway, I would like, personally, my whole issue's always been about the money. So, I'd like to see the in-kind so that I personally can-
And mine is money, mine is money and liability on splash pad next to the pond. I see that, and I hate to see the pond being fenced off, because people go up and feed the ducks, they fish, they do a lot of things around there. So, there's, I mean, that's part of the draws, to go up and get on water's edge, but-
Maybe it fences up on the edge of the-
Higher up where people can still get down.
Along the splash pad area.
That's what we had, was the perimeter around the splash pad. That's what was quoted from the fence, so not the pond, but the splash pad perimeter would be an ornamental fence.
Because you can have a road there, too.
Right.
And you don't want the kids running out into the middle of the road.
Well, they will.
The driveway going through.
They will.
I mean, we can look at that. We've got, I mean, we do have playground areas in a lot of parks that are close to water in a lot of our parks in our community.
Oh, yeah, they are fenced.
Highland, Lake Guthrie. No, they're not fenced.
Well, Lake Guthrie's different.
And nor is Highland.
No, it's not.
Highland's quite a waste of-
It's right there. It's right there.
Swimming pool.
So, you know, I don't think we should get too, I think, I think it's something that we shouldn't ignore. But I don't think we should get too worked up.
The pool is fenced.
Oh, the pool is, but not, but not a fence around the water.
No.
And there's playground.
Quite a ways, there's quite a bit of distance between the two.
So, you know, and, you know, I think when we're talking about doubling our money, being able to put down, you know, get half, put down fifty percent, I think there's a lot to say about that. Yes, it is a lot. I'm not minimizing that it's a lot of money.
But it depends, if your roof is falling off your house, you're not gonna build a swimming pool. You're gonna fix your roof. Okay, that's how that works, a hundred percent of the time, for a fact. Okay, in life, in real life. Got a hole in your roof, that's getting fixed before anything. Okay, we got holes everywhere, okay, that need to be fixed. So, the in-kind is huge.
Yes.
If we can take that in-kind and shrink that cash outlay down, two hundred and fifty, three hundred grand.
To where we can put a roof on it.
Then now it's a reason, exactly, now we're at a reasonable livable scenario.
One other thing I would point out, this agency, OTRD, that this comes from, of course, if we apply for other land and water conservation grants, we apply to other trails. If we do not move forward this grant, there is some element of are we- Creating a relationship that would jeopardize funding in the future.
Well, that was another question. If we turn this down, will this, that's a black mark against us on other grants?
Well, they're not gonna tell you that.
But, yeah, you don't use this.
Actually, I think they will tell you that, won't they?
Agencies normally aren't that blunt, but, I mean, the-
They are when they turn you down.
Developing relationships with these agencies ported the process where they will communicate with you and help guide you through the application process. And Rebecca's done a great job of developing a relationship with the representatives from that entity to get them to share information on not only this grant for future grants to make them more competitive. And we don't want that relationship to go away, because we want to be in a position to pursue other grants. You know, I think we're willing to take guidance from the city council and to the degree possible, use in-kind labor. I think that if we need to do a fence or look at repositioning the aquatic center, I think staff's receptive to all that's guidance. But I think when you look at all in all, keep moving our community forward, keep looking at things that are the type of amenities that are gonna attract young professionals, young entrepreneurs to our community. I know it's not a direct revenue generator, but that's what's gonna make our community grow, and that's the type of employees and where business and industry wanna be is where those young professionals and young entrepreneurs and young families are.
One, I'd like to commend you on all the efforts that you and city staff go through to try to find additional funding outside of our own.
Yes, and to you for doing it.
So, number one, I wanna say thank you for the hard work you guys have all done in trying to put this together. This may not be the perfect project for what we're wanting to do, but it, if you look at even like today, the bridge ceremony, everything that's been happening in Guthrie in the last couple of years has been very, very productive, very, it moves Guthrie forward. We've done a lot, we've done a lot since I've been on council to really move Guthrie, advance Guthrie, and you've been the forefront of all of that. So, I really wanna say, all of the staff, actually, Kim, all of y'all, I wanna say thank you for the work you've done in trying to do that. This may not be the project for us, but, but at the same time, I think the public needs to know the hard work that you guys go through to get us where we're at right now, having this discussion about something that may or may not happen. But at least we've got our ducks in a row, and you guys have already gone forward and found additional funding to make this possible without it all coming from our CIP. So, number one, I wanna say thank you. Number two, I don't really, the neighborhood park thing of this is my issue with it. It's not so much the pond, it's not so much any of the rest of that. It's just that this really isn't and never, to my knowledge, now, maybe it was at one time, but it's not really, it's not really a neighborhood park. There's not a neighborhood around it, there's not a lot of kids there. I'm thinking that that's not a good spend of our money. I think if, like Brian was talking about, I don't wanna really necessarily go out and buy someplace, but, but if we've, if we've got an area in a neighborhood that has no park, that the kids don't have anything to do in that neighborhood, such as what he was talking about over behind Ace, on the east side, on the south side of Guthrie, east side, southeast side, that there's nothing in there. And to give those kids something would really be, I think, a better spend of the money. And that's, that's where I'm at. I really think you've come up with a great plan, I just don't know that's the plan.
And I'm not disagreeing with you, but land and water conservation funds are looking at more of a regional thing that serves a larger population than just the one neighborhood.
Right.
And by doing it this way, you're putting a second splash pad in our neighborhood. I think we'll see, the first one we have in Banner Park is gonna be overloaded, if that's the only splash pad we have in the community.
It's gonna explode, yeah.
And by having a second one, it gives relief. We have a lot of family reunions in the park, Mineral Wells Park. This would be another amenity for those family reunions. More and more families are going, is one or two families might go together. So, these small pavilions that we're putting in there will accommodate a number of small family groups going to the park and having outings. And part of that communication with each other and being able to have relationships and bonding with other people in the community would be something that would be fostered in this type setting.
So, do we take the big pavilion out?
No.
No, absolutely not. We would add five small pavilions.
Not just around the grounds.
Three around the playground area and two by the splash pad.
Same style?
Same style.
Keeping with the historic style.
And the water's right there for the splash pad. I think the in-kind goes a long way.
I was gonna say-
That is a big, that is a game changer, and that does change my mind in a lot of ways, as long as we can do in-kind, because-
Does mine, too.
Four hundred and thirty-seven right out of pocket, hard dollars is like-
I would like to say something about the neighborhood parks, though. When I was growing up, a hundred years ago, we didn't have neighborhood parks, because neighborhood parks serve only the small, tiny neighborhood. We cannot put splash pads and all those things in little neighborhood parks, but we can serve a lot of people in the footprint of the park we have now. And I agree with the earlier statement that if we want to build some industry in the future here in Guthrie, we're gonna have to appeal to the people that like to take their children to a park, sit in a pavilion, talk and chat, let the children play, and then go home. And we can't do that if we don't accept this and apply the in-kind and move on.
And again, I don't think it's gonna be a park that kids come to and get dropped off at.
I don't think so either. The new mothers aren't doing that as much.
And the grandparents aren't either.
No.
They're not gonna just toss the kids and go. Banner's a different deal, that's a neighborhood park.
And again, we will explore all opportunities to use in-kind labor where we can as part of our match.
My only concern with the idea of relocating the splash pad was we were utilizing the existing water line from the old waiting pool to save money on cost on having to extend that line. So, that would be my only concern there, is maybe that would increase our cost.
But the fence might be a solution.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure that you have to move that.
Mr. Meyer?
Yeah.
I came in here not wanting to do this, but I'd like to make a motion that we proceed with this.
Well, aren't we gonna look at the in-kind numbers?
Yeah, we're gonna-
Did you say you had in-kind or not?
We could hold it off.
Rebecca?
I thought I had them, but I don't have them on me. My best would be an estimate from what Tenny could do on the project.
You don't have it?
I don't have them on me.
And even, even if we were giving you in-kind numbers, the abilities of our Public Works crews continue to grow. And we learned things from Banner Park by watching the contractors, and Tenny and his crews did that specifically, so they could do things next time that they couldn't do this time. So, it may be hard to give you a number until we get into the project, because we're constantly learning. We've got a good crew, and they're constantly trying to learn new things and watch contractors and how things are done.
Yeah, because we're not necessarily concrete people, but we're turning into that.
Correct.
I get that.
So, you know, even if we give you a number, that may fluctuate some. But I can tell you, with Tenny's crews, we will use as much in-kind labor as we can, given the other projects we have going, to keep the match down to the degree that we can.
I think we should vote on it, and I would second his-
Well, bottom line, I think that in-kind changes my mind on what it was.
But it does make me-
I mean, because I was, it was just too much money, but-
If it was dollar for dollar, that's just-
Were you making a motion?
Yes, sir, I was.
Okay, we have a motion, and Cheryl, you, a second. Have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any further discussion? Submit your votes. Let's see the votes. You announce approval to move forward with the acceptance of the grant funds for the splash pad playground improvements at Mineral Wells Park. Item number four, city manager report. Thank you, Rebecca.
I got a few items to cover. Just wanna highlight some of our community involvement. A lot of people aren't aware, but this is a picture of Officer Harley Fisher. The Guthrie Police Department continues their program to deliver meals on wheels when they are short of drivers. Hope some of the listening audience can help out, too. It takes about an hour of your time, and the rewards can be life-altering. You can contact Logan County Agency Services at Highland Hall if you have an interest or any questions. They can be reached at 405-282-1803. But again, just wanna highlight the fact that our departments are constantly trying to serve and be involved in our community. The next item I wanted to cover, the Third Annual First Capital Disc Golf Classic at Highland Park. Great group of disc golfers were up at, up to the challenges past Sunday morning at the Third Annual First Capital Classic at Highland Park. They had the capacity that they could handle, signed up, so it was full. Players from all over Oklahoma convened in Guthrie to test their skill. Can't wait to see this event continue to grow at one of the state's most scenic and challenging courses. Sunday afternoon, I got an email from a gentleman, Mr. Jim Reynolds, and he said, "I am enthusiastic, I am an enthusiastic disc golfer from Norman. I often travel to Guthrie to play your disc golf courses at Highland Park. I wish to thank the City of Guthrie Parks Department for their support of providing one of the most enjoyable disc golf courses in Oklahoma. Recently, the Parks Department performed a variety of changes to the course. Their willingness to support these challenges and their performance of these changes were commendable. I appreciate the City of Guthrie's commitment and support to disc golf. Thank you for a job well done." And so, that's from a disc golfer in Norman. Next item I'd like to cover, was already talked about tonight, the Kiwanis Club Christmas TV auction this Saturday, December eighth, from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., or till we get done. Come and join us in person on the second floor of Guthrie City Hall, right here in the council chambers. City Hall's at 101 North Second Street, for those that aren't familiar. Or you can watch it live on Cox Cable Channel 20. Or take us with you anywhere you go by streaming it live on GuthrieNewsPage.com or Guthrie News Page mobile app. All proceeds benefit the children in Guthrie. Each year, the Kiwanis Club provides three seniors with $1,000 scholarships, $250 to a Blue Jay sophomore. Third graders participate in a program called- Third graders, uh, participate in a program called Bring Up Grades or the Bug Program. Little ones, uh, with the annual Easter egg hunt, along with Coach Chews and Smiles for every kid in need. And it doesn't happen without everyone participating. Last item that I had was the Guthrie's Territorial Christmas Celebration, uh, Historic Homes Tour, uh, ten AM to five PM on Saturday, uh, December eighth, this Saturday. For the first time in several years, the State Capitol Publishing Museum lobby will be open to ticket holders. There's also an opportunity, I think, for an additional fee to go look at the restored Guthrie Depot. Uh, tickets to the self-guided tour for the homes are fifteen dollars. You can buy tickets in person, start at nine AM on the tour day at the Frontier Drugstore Museum, two fourteen West Oklahoma Avenue, or you can buy tickets online at www.guthriesterritorialchristmas.com. Bring a copy of your confirmation email or on your smartphone to the Drugstore Museum, and they'll print your information booklet out. And then also, in the same, uh, uh, event, the Victorian Christmas Walks, uh, from five to nine in historic down Guth- downtown Guthrie, uh, this Saturday, December eighth, and next Saturday, December fifteenth. Guthrie has long been a destination for fans of Victorian architecture, and with this lovely holiday walking tour, you can get an up-close look at these beautiful buildings, enjoy this Victorian Christmas Walk that includes carolers, peanut vendors, and over sixty decorated store windows with live exhibits depicting nineteenth-century Guthrie.
Item number five, comments from city council members. Councilman Bothroyd?
Uh, don't have much, just, uh, be weather aware. We've got a lot of weather coming in, supposedly. They're kinda changing that around a little bit, but be careful. Bring your animals in, and, uh, that's it for me.
Councilman Case?
Uh, we have a community who've come a long, long way in, in, in the last year, year and a half, and, uh, the bridge was a huge thing today, just huge to get that bridge done, and, and it's gorgeous. And if you haven't looked at the underside of it, you need to. But they, they just really, they do a great job on bridges today.
Yep, yep.
Um, we, we've come a long way, we've got a long way to go, and I think we're doing a pretty, pretty darn good job, um, of safeguarding the, the money of the community of Guthrie. That's all I got.
Councilwoman Paget?
Well, I happen to agree with both people that have already spoken. Also, if we do have bad weather this weekend, try to remember your neighbors, uh, anyone that might be disabled or might need your help. Um, that would be a good thing to do, and I love Guthrie. Hang in there, everybody, we're doing a good job.
Councilman Taylor?
Uh, thank you, staff. Appreciate all y'all's hard work, because I know you have to spend a lot of hours and, you know, put up Leroy, so I, I really appreciate what y'all do. And, um, also, sta- I agree with the staff, the bridge opening today was outstanding. Uh, by the way, there was a story, uh, about Logan County aging tonight, I think, Aaron Reelback, I think was on-
Aaron Reelback on Channel Nine.
Channel Nine did a story about that. So, yeah, if you've got time, folks, and you wanna go do something like that, uh, just, you know, I used to do it a lot. I, I helped my mom when we did it, we did it, I think-
It was on Meals on Wheels, delivering the meals.
Yeah, and it's really outstanding, so, and you touch a lot of people, uh, by going and just, just a couple of minutes to visit with them, because a lot of times, this is the only person they have to visit with, maybe for the whole week, or, you know, it's every day you come in, or every couple of days that you come. So if you can spend a little time, do it, so. And then last thing, uh, I see Chris Evans got out of the elevator, so I'm really happy about that. Uh, I was really worried, and he was locked in that elevator for several hours, so I just wanted to-
Several hours?
Yeah, well, several hours, wasn't it? There you go, so.
You know exactly, huh?
Who was counting?
Won't forget a minute of it, huh?
What, four or five, I think there was, or maybe it was five or six of you in there, six, okay. Well, I, I knew it was an interesting evening, so I'm glad you're back and, and, and you're not, you know, filled it and killed you or anything like that, so there we go.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Uh, thank you. It's, I can't really improve on what everybody else has said, and everybody has said it very well. Looking forward to this weekend. I'm glad we're able to have a discussion and talk out these issues and things that we wanna improve Guthrie, but how much money it's gonna cost, we wanna take care of that. And thank you for your hard work in putting that together, because I know that takes time. And I know we need to, it's something we do need to do and keep moving forward with the city of Guthrie. The bridge is beautiful, everything that's been done is just, the city's coming along, and it's looking really well. Everybody be careful this weekend, have a great Victorian weekend this weekend, just be careful with the weather.
Well, congratulations, uh, to everybody that had anything to do with opening night. The parade was a huge success, the biggest parade they've ever had on opening night. Uh, I mean, Santa Claus was, was smiling, and the reindeer were smiling, and everybody involved was smiling. It was a great, great thing, and, uh, congratulations to the territorial governor, uh, Governor Rains, Verla Rains, and, uh, Junior Governor, uh, Blakely Husky, Husky, I, um, just, uh, two, two great representatives of, uh, of the territory and our community, and, and the choir did a great job on the, on the steps there. It was a wonderful night, uh, for, for everybody, so, uh, and, and, of course, again, city staff was, uh, was tremendous in, in doing all the things that they do behind the scenes uh, to ma- to make that happen. Um, one more activity that, that we've got going on, Santa's flying into the airport. Uh, and, uh, so that's, uh, Saturday, December fifteenth, from one to three. It's a freebie, uh, for all the citizens, bring your kids out there, they get a chance to see Santa Claus, they get a chance to, uh, get up close and personal with some, some airplanes, uh, and so it's a wonderful, wonderful thing. Uh, and, um, get out there to, to see a real gem of our community that, um, that sometimes we kinda take for granted and don't see too much. Kinda like the underside of that viaduct. It's a beautiful thing, it's really a beautiful thing. Uh, and, uh, and, and again, the viaduct dedication was great, everybody that braved the few snowflakes that came down, uh, but a good thing, and dedicate, dedicated to a, a wonderful visionary, a wonderful leader of our community, John Gummerson, uh, and thanks for, to the state, fifteen-plus million-dollar investment that they made in Guthrie America. We're pleased that they made that investment and proud, uh, that, uh, that we're a recipient. And the, and the walkway, uh, for walking and for bike riding be a major part of the, of the plan for, uh, the, the bike and walking routes connecting all of our parkways, east and west side of, of Guthrie, America. So, um, just another, another great thing that's happening in our town. It's a great thing. Thanks to the staff, Leroy, thanks for your leadership. That's all we've got, ladies and gentlemen. We're adjourned, thank you.